Okay.
I would entertain that idea.
Mr. Abud. Mr. Abud. We're gonna start. Good evening, everybody. We call the meeting, the regular meeting for the City Council, for the City of Lethir Village, to order, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Roll call. Mayor Brock.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Copas.
Here.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Weeks.
Still here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Invite all of you to join us, since we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Councilmembers, you've seen the agenda. Are there any suggested changes to that, additions, deletions, et cetera?
No, sir.
If not, could we have a motion to approve the agenda as distributed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. The agenda has been adopted for the evening. The approval of minutes are the first set of items. There is a study session that was held on September 28th, and could we have you look at those for the...
Yeah, no changes here. Good.
If not, if there are no additions or corrections, could we have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. Next is the minutes for the regular meeting, which was also held on September 28th, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Again, that is taking all the fun out of the minutes. There are no changes.
Very disappointing.
Yeah.
Our clerk has been turning out... You've developed a pretty good record here of stealing all of our thunder and cranking corrections. Could we have a motion to accept those minutes?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to accept the minutes for the regular meeting of October... No, excuse me, of September 28th. All those in favor, please be saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. And finally, there was a study session held on October 5th, and the minutes of that are included as well. The only item on that one was the audit presentation which was given by our auditors, Plant Moran.
No changes here.
Have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. And we then will move on to our dispersment reports. The first is for a period of covering from September 1st through September 15th of 2015, an expenditures totaling $43,663.70. The second is for the period of September 16th through the 30th of 2015, and amounts expenditures totaling $497,903.72. Councilmembers, does anybody have any questions or comments on the detail behind these?
I do have a question on page four. With the mirrored panels, one is under the other recreation programs for Elvis. Is it Elvis? And then the other one is under senior activities. They both are for... Well, one's for $396.41. They're both for $396.41. What is that?
What'd you say it was for?
This. Mirror panels, but they're under two different descriptions.
I thought you referred to Elvis. I didn't know he was in the building, but okay. Wasn't Elvis. Sorry.
Just a very term, all right?
The mirrored panels are actually... They're a non-glass mirrored panel. We use them downstairs with our dance areas, and then we just purchased one for... We consolidate our fitness center, and the other one's gonna be a senior fitness workout room.
Okay.
So one of them, we were able to pay out of the senior expenditures.
Okay. I mean, I thought they were mirrors for the most part, but why they were two different descriptions?
Different funds.
And then, of course, I have to bring it up.
Please do.
The next one, which is on page five... This is just because I'm taking over Allen's place. What is a Fall Fest pumpkin? Pumpkin. Pumpkin.
Is this in the DDA?
Yes.
Yes. Annually, the DDA sponsors the pumpkin patch at our annual Fall Fest.
How is it spelled?
So every little child that came out with a pumpkin, a pumpkin. A pumpkin came away with a little bit of Lethir spirit. Pumpkin, with an M.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome. That was for you.
Not for punks, at all.
That was for him.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm done.
Mayor?
May I?
Yes, absolutely.
Same category, the DDA. The bike rack from Stephen Frank Studios. Is that the bike rack we're purchasing for in commemoration of Mr. Serno?
Yes, sir. We purchased two of them. One of them will be dedicated to Mr. Serno's memory.
Okay. And do we have them yet?
I've not had delivery on them yet, no, sir, but they have been completed, and we are selecting a spot and figuring out how to anchor it now.
You hate to take delivery of bike racks before we have two feet of snow on the...
It would seem.
And when we do get those, and they are dedicated or whatever, I'm sure there'll be adequate notice for all interested persons.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And then, same page, I see Giffords and Webster's is being compensated for their... For the alleys. So are we done with the alleys, Seth?
The... Yes, the alleyways have been completed. The remainder of the engineering work has been concluded, and they're working through the punch list now. So it looks like all the rehabs have happened. I was just driving up and down it the other day. So the rehab, the restorations, and the storm drainage has all been installed now. So it's completed.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Priya, anything from your end of the table?
May I volunteer one, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I was incorrect in some information I gave at the previous meeting on the Plant Moran billings for the DDA portion of the annual audit. The billing was actually split into two. The DDA was billed in the second portion, which is why it did not appear in the previous one.
Okay.
So we actually do those in real time. We used to wait to do the journal entry at the end of the year. This year, they'll be done as billed, as you wanted.
Okay, good.
10% of total cost.
$800 would have totaled. Yes, sir.
All right. Could we have a motion to accept the dispersment reports?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. This time, we reached that point on our agenda where we invite members of the audience who might wish to discuss issues that are not, and I underline the word "not," listed on the agenda. This is an opportunity for you to come forward, ask your step to the podium, and use the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone.
You're out of order. I'm sorry.
My name is Michael Abud. I reside at 17531 Ramsgate Drive, in the family home that was purchased in 1968, so we've been in Lethir for quite a few years. And I'm just here to address a couple things from the group that was here about two, three months ago. First of all, I'd like to thank Matt or the city engineers, because I was told that they're moving our paving of our street up a year till next year, which is definitely in dire straits, so I appreciate that. One of the issues was that Operation Watch Lethir sign that was laying down. My neighbor, Mark Howard, got on a ladder and pounded it back into the ground, but my suggestion is maybe we can sink it, put some concrete in it, and then resink it, because I don't think it'll last through the winter. And he also asked me to ask you if you heard anything about Lake Ramsgate. Remember that ditch that was formed by those semi-trucks?
Right.
Yeah. So I don't know if you've had any updates on that, or if there's anything...
I know that we cited the property owner.
Okay.
I'll have to check back with you on the results so far.
Okay. And I personally met with DTE. I called on about 7:00 Monday, August 31st, to tell him about the street sign slash lamppost on Ramsgate in Southfield, and they gave me a reference number of 812-558-49. And the next morning, they responded, and I asked them to call me when they were there, and I met a fellow that was the lineman, and he said he'd had to contact the underground group, which I guess must take care of the stuff on the ground and under, because I don't know much about it. But he said it was an access panel, and he told me that the municipality was responsible for it, but I was told that it's their responsibility. So, and I believe Mayor Brock also told me that they should have some of these panels in their warehouse somewhere. So just to give you an update, I don't know if anybody wants to follow up on that. And I was gonna make a comment on the street sign, but as Matt came into the meeting, he told me that I guess they were trying to drill the street sign on Ramsgate and Lethir Boulevard, and they broke their bit, or auger, whatever it is.
Yeah.
So one of the main reasons was we were concerned about that getting done before we got a hard freeze, and, you know, we were... It's been like over a year, and I think for emergency purposes and other... I know a couple times, people have come to my house, and I say, "Turn right on Ramsgate." They're coming up, and they go by, and they go, "Where's Ramsgate?" And I, you know, forget the sign's gone. But outside of that, I just wanted to bring you an update, and I told everybody I was going to come. And I also would like to ask for your prayers. My neighbor, Dolores Williams, who lives right next door, eight months ago was diagnosed with ALS, and she's slipped very hard and fast.
Sorry, yeah.
She's not speaking much anymore, and she's lost a lot of weight, and I try to get her mail and stuff and go shopping for her when I can, but just keep her in your prayers, because she's... We have a real good, nice street on Ramsgate, you know? And you know how well the Jacksons decorate and plant flowers and all that, so... In fact, Carl wanted to come, but he was a little under the weather. So I appreciate your time, Mayor, City Council, and Chief, and everyone, and God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on items that are not on the agenda? Hearing none. Thank you for yours, Michael. We have no public hearings this evening. There's none scheduled, so we'll move on to our action requests. The first item is to consider a motion to accept the 2014-2015 financial audit, and...
Mr. Mayor, the...
Put your city treasurer head on and tell us all about it.
Oh, I give all the credit to our city treasurer. We had a successful audit this year. The results were presented to the City Council at the October 5th study session. That meeting has been broadcast on our cable station, as well as is now on our YouTube channel as well, for anybody who would like to watch it. I do give Pamela Barachi quite a bit of high praise. She works all year long to make sure that our records are in good and complete order, and then she probably puts a whole year's worth of work into the month prior to making sure that the week that the auditors are here are in, that they just have the smoothest time possible. And they forever have been praising us on their record-keeping. I know that there were several questions answered, asked and answered during the presentation of Plant Moran, but I don't know if the council members have any tonight.
Okay. Thank you. No, Pam has obviously done a great job as her role as treasurer, and we all, I think, appreciate her contribution to the city. I think it's nice of her to put money in where she ought to. No, I'm kidding. All right. Councilmembers, anyone have any questions on the audit? I think we had plenty of opportunity in our own meeting to hear the details of the audit. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the financial audit presented by Plant Moran.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those... Well, is there any other discussion, questions, et cetera? All those in favor of the motion to accept the financial audit, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Next is the consideration of a contract with the City of Ferndale for our leaf collection. This is... Is this our third or fourth year?
Fourth year.
Fourth year of working with Ferndale. There are several cities that do this cooperatively. We pick up our leaves, and then we take them to Ferndale and spread them on their streets. No, I'm kidding. We take them in the... At their DPS yards, where they accumulate from several cities, and saves a lot of trucking time and a lot of pickup time, so we can keep up with the leaves as they come down much better this way. And it also gives us more service savings, so...
You do a good job, too.
I do. Anything else you want to tell about it?
No, sir.
So the proposed contract, there is a suggested motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement for leaf collection and storage with the City of Ferndale, and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Seconded the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have one question. Again, so it's remained flat, meaning, as in, there's no increase this go-around?
Correct. Yes, so price has been the same for four years.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a win-win for us.
I've heard of it, something is not going up over four years, so that's... The other cities that do this with us is, in addition to Ferndale, is Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, and ourselves, so...
Saves money and time.
There's several of us benefiting from this arrangement. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Item C is the consideration of a motion to elect members to the Michigan Municipal League Property and Liability Pool. We have... The Michigan Municipal League provides two major pools. One is for workers' compensation, which we participate in, is that with our... Because we're employees. And then the one is for overall property and liability, and that's the one that, again, we... We're also a part of that pool, and it saves us a lot of money over the years, and so every year, there are terms that expire on these boards, and the MML sends us out this request to cast our vote for folks that we want to have on there. So there is a suggested motion.
I move to affirm the nominations as provided by the MML Property and Liability Pool, and authorize the city clerk to notify the MML before November 3rd, 2015.
November 9th.
November 9th.
November 9th.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. The next would be considering the approval of a second reading and adoption of an amendment to the off-street parking ordinance. Seth?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This came to you at the recommendation of the planning commission. It was in front of you at your last meeting for first reading, which was approved unanimously, and the ordinance is now in a proper format for your second reading and consideration.
Thank you. Councilmembers, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of an amendment to zoning ordinance section 5.13, in quotations, "off-street parking." Is there a second?
Is there a second? That's right.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Any difference between the electronic version and this hard copy?
No, sir, just format.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Next is a consideration of approval for a second reading and adoption of an amendment to the mobile food vending ordinance.
Right. Once again, this came to you at the recommendation of the planning commission to add, for the first time, rules and regulations regarding mobile food vendors. It was approved at your last meeting for first reading, and it's here together tonight for second reading and approval. And basically, what this allows is mobile food vendors, by definition, to be in certain locations within the city on private property, no more than three days per year, per parcel, upon obtaining... Upon obtaining an appropriate permit from the city, and the other requirements that are listed. Ready for your final consideration.
Okay. Council? Suggested motion?
Well, I will so move, but I think the language here of this proposed motion doesn't make any sense to me.
Yes.
But I will so move what they said.
Not the... The motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the appropriate motion.
Can the city attorney maybe restate the motion so it makes sense, fellas?
An appropriate motion would be to approve the second reading of the ordinance known as Mobile Food Vending Ordinance, as submitted.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. As usually happens when we add something like this, we vexed on our agenda as to consider an update to the Lethir Village fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, I am proposing, after reviewing the procedures for licensing and the other like uses that we permit in the city, I'm proposing that a $25 licensing fee be assessed to anyone applying to be a mobile food vendor here in the city. This amount mirrors our business license that we annually place upon our brick-and-mortar businesses.
I'll make the motion to approve the addition of a $25 mobile food vendor license fee to the 2015 Lethir Village fee schedule.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Question we have had in the past, a mobile food vendor who might set up shop in one... On one piece of property, and then moves to another, also within the city. So does this mean he needs to get a license both times?
Yes, sir.
So each is a separate...
Specific location.
It is a separate license.
Yes, sir.
License event. So after they've exhausted three days one place, which is $25, and you move somewhere else, it's another $25?
Correct.
And then, when you're saying this, in line with new businesses, you mean for the transient merchants?
No, our new businesses, if you were to apply for a new business license, there's a... The fee that you pay includes an inspection. I removed the inspection portion that we assessed of that new business, so $25 ends up being processing and enforcement of cost recovery.
Okay. But I'm wondering if this should say for the mobile food vendor with the $25 is per location?
We can make that a minute.
Well, does it say that stately?
It's outlined in the ordinance that it's specific to a single location.
That was my question. It's where that is clearly spelled out in the ordinance itself.
But they can stay at a location for more than three days?
No.
No.
Yes.
No, they cannot.
Granting an extension of the site plan for two additional three-day periods?
Yeah, different places, or back there, but not continual stays.
Right.
On the... Okay. So it says on the site plan...
It's gonna cost them $25 if they do it three times.
Yep.
So, so on.
So do you explain the ordinance to someone that was coming here for... To do the mobile vending? Or do they just get the fee schedule?
No. They would actually, when they are filling out their permits, we design all of our permits around giving the... Our best ability to enforce the ordinance, so that it's all presented there right up front to them, so that they understand that they can't sit and sit and sit and sit, and without actually re-upping or going to somewhere new. It'd be outlined in the permit document. We don't want to leave anybody with questions as they leave.
Okay.
And a building official...
Is there any other discussion or questions on the fee schedule?
I have a question. And you may have... Oh.
Yeah. Sorry to do that. We'll get you in practice.
Donna Stallings. 27430 Eldorado Place.
Good job.
All right. Was there a limit on how many times that a person can set up shop?
Three times a year.
Three times a year? And is it any type of food? Did they... Any type of... Anything that they... Okay. Well, last question. Is there a certain look that they have to have? Do they... Is there to represent our community?
The ordinance... I don't know that there's a...
No. Signage, cleanliness, and lighting are all outlined in the ordinance, but not condition of the vehicle, per se.
Okay. So they can pretty much have whatever type of signage they want, or whatever size truck?
It has to be attached to the vehicle, right?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Let's see. Is there any other discussion on this motion?
Yep, I have another question about it.
I knew I waited too long.
Yeah, you did. It's three times a year, three different places. Three times a year for three days, three different places.
Yes, a vendor can come, visit the city three times for three days each, and then they've exhausted their...
At approved locations.
Okay. Okay.
Again, this is something that the planning commission knows may be revisited next year, may be revisited two years from now. It gets us to the point where we completely identify what we know the pitfalls will be: sound location, litter, signage, and restrooms, more than one vendor being set up in one Tried to take the pitfalls out of it the best we could.
Just a typo.
Matt. Matt Scott.
All right.
The publishers.
Any other discussion?
No, sir.
It's an item how?
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. And I think we also have included in your packet are the various departmental reports, including the reports from the Lethir Village Police Department, Public Services, Code Enforcement, and the planning commission minutes. There is a suggested motion to accept these reports as submitted. Can somebody?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions or questions about any of these reports?
Leaf collection program, what's the start and stop time?
Leaf collection program actually started today, and we anticipate it running through about the second week in December, depending upon weather.
Okay. Are we filing pretty much the schedule of past years as to which sections are gonna be on which days?
Absolutely.
And that was... Was that... That was included in our last newsletter, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
That shows that.
And it's also online as well, for anybody who's interested.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? The police report is expanded according to our wishes, and... The police report is expanded according to our wishes and...
Yeah, I'm just... No, never mind.
I think that we may want to look at whether we want to keep doing that.
That's what my question was because I just... I don't see...
What's a year would be fine.
Yeah, or... Because, I mean...
I know that hurts your feelings.
I know that's what we talked about before and that's what I said to, um... Tenant when he was here last time. That is just... It's not, um... I'm not sure what we were supposed to get out of it from every month.
Well, remember, we asked for it, so...
Oh, I know.
So he's given it to us and we've already...
I didn't ask for it.
We've already cried on the...
Yeah.
Said we'll accept it less frequently.
What you said before about warning us about it not, you know, looking like we have a heavy, um... You're accurate and I appreciate it and I think that we're right that we can go to maybe once a year or semi-annually. This doesn't...
Semi, yeah.
Okay, the motion is to accept that it reports as submitted. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. City Administrator, do you have any additional updates?
Sir, if I may, I have three items for you. A reminder that the November 3rd election is fastly approaching. There are a couple of items to note here. The last day to mail absentee ballots is actually gonna be Halloween of this year.
Appropriate.
The city clerk will be holding hours. That's actually a Saturday, so... But the city clerk will be having special office hours of 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And they'll be open for voter... Absentee voters. The last day to vote absentee, you would have to do it in person when you... When you come, but it would be November 2nd. After that, individually able to vote at the polls, but you can't return your absentee ballot during the election until 4 o'clock.
You said you could vote absentee in person?
You can't. I know. But if you... If it's after the 31st, then yes, you would be handed your absentee.
Sounds wrong, doesn't it?
Right.
I'm gonna opt for that.
You're an in-person absentee voter, yes.
The clerk has assured me that it all is on the up and up. I've even offered to handle these for her in the past, but she won't hear of it, so...
That's probably why she assured you.
That's why she assured, that's right.
Sir, the second item is that the city council meetings have now been placed online thanks to our agreement with CMN TV. It's not live, but they can be quickly accessed so that anybody who needs to recap the events of these wonderful meetings, then they can do so. Not only that, but also special events are there as well. So it's great viewing. The third item is our redevelopment-ready communities certification event has been scheduled. You have an invitation in front of you. We'll be sending them out far and wide, but November 6th at 11:00 a.m., that's Friday, be right down there in our community room. And the MEDC is coming to congratulate us on the work we've done to become a redevelopment-ready community, which is... Which means a number of different things, but for us, it means that Lathir's open for business. We are serious about our commitment to fulfilling our master plan.
Any questions? Additional questions for Matt on the...
I do.
These are other items?
Matt, I know we have an ordinance for vehicles with signage on them promoting whatever they're promoting. Have we cracked down on them?
We looked at a couple of different instances and we don't have... We're not in a strong enforcement position on vehicles that are wrapped to advertise for businesses that are in commercial areas. That's one thing that I'm working on with our building official now. I'm figuring out how we can enforce those. To answer your question directly, no, sir. Not above and beyond the typical sign ordinance.
Because there's a new one at the corner at 12, and that would be considered against our ordinance or vaguely off the lines?
Our ordinance is currently mummied on the subject.
The men's clothing store has got a vehicle there.
That's right, okay.
I fully anticipate if city outlets doing it, to expect one from Sam's Alterations, to expect one from Hot Suit, to expect one from Henry Siegel Suit Sign Company. There's sort of been a cold war with one another.
Yeah.
So we...
So what is our position?
We... The ordinance is currently mummied on it. And so we need some ability to enforce it. I'm talking with Mr. Quinn's counterpart, Mr. Baker, as well as our building official on how we can use our existing ordinance language to put a cap on these things. Because Levy... I mean Levy Tax Associates has an RV.
Right.
That's wrapped. I mean, it's...
They've got a moving billboard, yes, is what they've got there, yeah.
Which never moves.
No, no. Moves or hummer.
Does he... I thought for a while he was moving it around on the property a little bit.
Well, he might be doing that.
Just, uh...
It never leaves the property.
Yeah. All right.
Our recreation plan, where are we presently with receiving the new five-year plan?
I will have to get an update for you. I don't have that exact answer offhand. But I will absolutely have an update for you.
Your end, has to be?
It should be your answer. It should come back to you at least by December.
When do grants open up for rec departments?
For...
There's twice a year.
Yeah, usually you follow the state's fiscal year of October. Their October 1s are starting their fiscal year, which usually means their coffers are refilled at that point.
So that would have been the first grant opportunity would have been October. And then... But there's a second one, correct, after the first year?
Usually, yes. They open up more along... Throughout the year. I don't know if it always aligns with the calendar year or not, but usually there's a second crack at a lot of these.
Did you find out or verify that we at least have a chance?
They normally send out a notification, but we should find out.
Yeah. I haven't got anything recently, but I will absolutely give a timeline for you.
Because I thought at one time we were trying to get in that October deadline. In fact, we had the city planner working on it with the rec department. Are they still cooperating?
They have not done much with it, honestly. There's been a push to finish up the summer events and get past Fall Fest before anything was gonna get worked on again in the department of a single person. But I will absolutely have an update and a timeline for you at the... At the next meeting.
Maybe she could get that good summer help she had to come back.
That's irreplaceable.
Went right over her head down there.
How about the... I'm sure we've notified by now the company that's gonna do our website?
Yes.
Have they given you any information as far as how they're going to schedule the different meetings and...
Yeah, they did give me an informational packet that I've been reading through, but we have not gotten to the point of scheduling those meetings yet.
Okay, is it a series of two meetings with the residents or three? I can't remember now.
Three.
Three.
Three is what they proposed. I thought that was a good number.
So you'll have something for us on that timeline?
Yes, sir.
Because that should happen sooner than later.
Oh, yeah. I'm excited about it.
Has our drug committee met yet?
We sent out their... Letters went out, emails went out, but they have not met in person. There's just been some... Sharing us some information via email.
Okay.
And it may be one that we don't actually have to meet in person, but can share the...
Because that's a short fuse there to get that rolling.
Short fuse.
Short fuse. Okay, thank you.
Any other?
No, sir.
Points? Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. Two items of personal legal interest. First of all, to Alan, I've been the city attorney for 19 years, enjoyed every second of it. Alan... Well, almost. Alan's been here for 14 years, as I think, on city council. My first five years as city attorney then was really fun and Alan did all very perfectly. I've just... Alan knows I'm teasing him. We tend to do that a lot. But I just want to say what a pleasure it's been working with you for the time you've been on council. It's just been outstanding. You always have a little different point of view at things.
A little...
Sometimes majorly different.
Just a little different.
But in the end, he typically will come around to the way things... Some people think should be done and he'll end up being a team player. But it's just been a joy, you know, being with you for 14 years and good luck, whatever you're gonna do in your extra time after you're no longer a council person.
Don't you feel good you've been able to fulfill his needs?
Well, you know, if we keep all comments honest, this process should be really short if we're talking praise. But it's been fun working with you. And your comment about coming around. So many meetings I have come to with the idea that I knew how I was going to vote on an issue. And the great thing about study sessions and also listening to your fellow council people is that you go, aha, I didn't think about that. And I've done that more often than, you know, strictly blindly, you know, holding my position. So it's been interesting and fun.
You've been a valuable member of the team, that's for sure.
My second item of legal personal interest is is that I'm also, like Alan, changing the course of my legal practice after being the city attorney here for 19 years. And I'm going to move into more of a consultant role with my firm after the first of the year. So I'll be handling this meeting. The December meeting will probably be my last official meeting. And then I'll handle things as they come, you know, as needed hereafter. But I just finished my 40th year of practice. Wow. Was, you know, feeded by Oakland County Buyer Association with a group of other 40-year practitioners, which is really great because most of them, we went to law school together. And, you know, it was just good to be able to hang around that long.
So you're saying, based on that, there's gonna be an upgrade in the quality of the folks in the buyer association?
I've been working on... Yes, yes, that. And the same with Mr. Baker. Training him for the last 15 years. And he really loves this community and lives and breathes it.
We've enjoyed working with him.
And I think he'll continue to do a great job with me mentoring in the background.
Of course.
You never get all of your fingers out of the legal practice, so I've been told.
So somebody must have hinted to me and I didn't catch it